All right. I'd like to start off with public comments. If anyone has any public comments, we ask you to come up to the board. Give you three minutes. State your name and address for the record. Please.
Good morning. My name's Leo Puhala. I'm the attorney for the Antonine Maronite Sisters of Youngstown, Antonine Village in the Antonine Adult Daycare. For the record, my address is 201 East Commerce Street, Youngstown. There's a matter on the agenda today concerning a memorandum of understanding binding between the village of Lordstown, Mahoning County, the Antonine Sisters and their related corporate entities. The memorandum concerns the installation, operation, and maintenance of a new water line adjacent to North Lipkey Road. The water line is necessary and important for the sisters to continue their ministry servicing the folks of Mahoning County, not only the existing building, but an expansion project that they have. So I would like to thank the commissioners for their time, consideration, and prospective support of the memorandum of understanding in this project. I would also like to thank Mr. Patrick Genetti, the Mahoning County engineer, and his team, Jeff Smith and Joe Muccio. They've been professionals throughout the whole process in support of this. And lastly, I'd like to thank the Mahoning County Prosecutor's Office, specifically Attorney John Hayno and Attorney Don Duda for their time professionalism in helping to prepare this memorandum of understanding. The water line is an important element for the sisters to continue what they have going on out at North Lipkey Road, servicing Mahoning County and its citizens, but also an expansion of those services and ministry. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate you coming up. For Leo, I'm sorry. Related to Puhala's in Austinitown?
Yes, I was your newspaper.
That's what I thought. I haven't seen you in 30 years. I'm telling you, as soon as you said Leo Puhala, I thought they'd live right at the top of the hill.
Exactly. You have to drive near where the house you grew up in.
I'm telling you, in a beautiful brick ranch.
That's exactly right. Yes, sir.
Because my sister lives in my mother's house.
Okay.
And I drive past your house all the time. And I always look at it and say, it looks as nice today as it did when you guys had it.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, house family.
They're doing well, doing well. Thanks for remembering us. I absolutely drive to your house, your house you grew up in right now.
Yeah, I'm mad you're still slim and trim and got hair and everything.
Yeah, well.
I know you're a lot younger than me.
Yeah, I'm a little younger, but I'll show you one of my brothers. They might be a little different.
I'm telling you, I know. It was three of you, weren't there?
There were six kids.
Three brothers?
And we delivered the newspapers for probably 25, 30 years in that area.
Yep.
So flew in your house. And Dan Ryan, the morning mayor, was in there.
Yeah, the mayor of the morning.
Yeah.
Dan Ryan, oh my God. And he had his daughter Kathy. We went to school with Kathy. I think it was Kathy Ryan or?
I think that's correct. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, that was good times.
Good times, absolutely.
We had a great neighborhood, a lot of kids. Everybody ran around together and played football in the streets. You know, fun times. Fun times. That was before the cell phones, you know, ruined us.
Well, that's true. Yeah, the kids sit inside now and on the phone. Exactly right.
Well, thank you, Leo. Appreciate your work.
Thank you for your time.
With the Antonine Sisters. Okay, anyone else? Other comments? Okay, we'll move on to the approval of previous minutes of Board meeting number 33 from Thursday, August 31st, 2023, and approval of bills for payment.
So move?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion to approve journal entry number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Agreements, facilities. Alan.
Good morning, Commissioner. A is agreement with Zinkin Enterprises Incorporated for heating and cooling water treatment at various locations in the estimated amount of $4,410 with renewal options, general funds.
Okay. Jobs and family. Audrey.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Audrey, Nancy, and Jim. Letter B, job and family service agreement with the following non-emergent transportation services in the estimated amounts of non-general, Independent Radio Taxi Incorporated, $360,000, CES Group LLC, $120,000, Angel Carriers LLC, $27,000. Letter C, job and family services amendment number one with juvenile justice center for the 2023 Ten of Summer Work Program, an additional amount of $400,000, and this is non-general. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Lead based.
Good morning, commissioners. This D is an agreement with the Howland Company for lead hazard control and healthy homes work at 4319 Howard in the amount of $33,972, non-general, and also in conjunction with, both of these are the City of Youngstown Community Development Block Grant funding as well. E is an agreement with Howland Company as well for lead hazard control and healthy homes work at 230 Marmion in the amount of $44,669.05.
Good morning, commissioners. Letter S, sanitary.
Erica, yes.
It's an agreement with Rudzik Excavating for emergency sewer repair at North Canfield Nell's Road in the estimated amount of $10,000, and these are non-general funds.
Okay, thank you. Sheriff's Department, Chuck.
Good morning, everyone. G is a third amendment to the master agreement with Secures Technologies, the software regional services.
All right, thank you, Chuck. Agreements, motion to approve.
Motion to approve agreements, letters A through G.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Change orders, engineers. Rick.
I use a change order number two with APBN, which is a bridge, a project. It's in the amount of $13,580.05.
Motion to approve change orders.
Motion to approve change orders, 3A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Record of bids, OMB grants.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning. This is a record of bids for the Craig Beach Village Grandview Road resurfacing project, base three, and this is part of the CVBG program this year. Non-general.
Okay, thank you. Motion approved.
Motion to approve record of bids, 2A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Resolution of awards. A, B, engineers. Rick.
A is an award to Seven Mile Run Culver Lining Project to DRS Enterprises. It's in the amount of $379,663.50. It's non-general and low bid. He is to award the Western Reserve Road, Part One and Part Two to Maruch and Gaffney, excavating in the amount of $176,18,168.24. That's non-general in a combination of federal and state funds and a little bit.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Rick. Motion approved.
Motion to approve resolution of awards, A and B.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Resolutions, commissioners, OMB. Resolutions on projects.
Commissioners, this is a resolution approving the agreements and expenditures with the following agencies. This is funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. Pollin Township, $4,940. Pollin Township, $4,500. Ursland Sisters Mission, $297,680. Item B is a resolution approving the First Amendment with Involta LLC for the indefeasable rights of use agreement related to the Mahoning Youngstown, Ohio Regional Information System, and that's the Mioris, in the amount of $2,100,000 plus $5,981 for monthly service and maintenance equipment. This is a project that we'll be working with Eastgate and Shreve County to increase broadband services throughout the county. And item, still calling.
Okay.
Items, item C is a resolution approving a bidder's affidavit.
Why don't you go through the rest of yours and then I can speak on that.
This is a resolution approving a bidder's affidavit to be included in bid packets for all public works projects per the revised code, section 9.312. Item D is a resolution approving appropriation of $10,000 from the Oakley Settlement Fund to the Mahoning County Public Health. Item E is a resolution approving random understanding with the village of Lordstown and the Antonine Maronite Sisters of Youngstown, Inc., Antonine Village, and the Antonine Sisters Adult Daycare, Inc., for the installation, operation, maintenance, repair, replacement, and removal of a public water system, water line along the public road right of way of Lipkey Road.
Say that twice, fast.
Uh-uh. What I can, I do want to say before Gina speaks, I know that commissioners had brought everybody together, and I'm so glad that, you know, this project is moving forward. And this is one step now goes to the village of Lordstown, too, sign. But this was a major to keep things moving along, so.
Please.
Sure. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Audrey and Nancy. I wanted to speak a little bit about letter C, which is the new bidder's affidavit. So by way of brief background, in 2000, the then Board of County Commissioners passed resolution 00.442. And what that resolution did, it enhanced its bid packaging for public works projects. Specifically, what that resolution did was it required prospective bidders to provide information regarding the quality of their workmanship, reliability, timeliness, and credentials. And this was all under revised code 9.312. While the resolution had great intentions when it went into effect in 2000, there was really no specific means for this board to collect the information from each bidder. So what we did, we've researched, we talked to constituents, we've looked at the law, we've looked at what other areas are doing within the state of Ohio. And what we figured was the best way to collect this information and get it unilaterally and consistently from all prospective bidders was to create a proposed bidder's affidavit, which is going to be attached to the resolution, which we, which you have seen today. So in this affidavit, what we will be asking prospective bidders to be providing is information that's sanctioned under revised code 9.312. And what that is, is information that will go to whether the bidder on the contract is responsible. And that is the experience of the bidder, the bidder's financial condition, conduct and performance on previous contracts, facilities, management skills, and ability to execute the contract properly. You know, it is important, I believe, that everyone, the commissioners need to have all information that they can have regarding public works contracts, regarding prospective bidders. And the best way to do this is ask for this information from everyone who submits a bid. And that is what we will be doing this point forward. And it will be a way for us to evaluate every bidder fairly and consistently. And again, this has been used in other areas of the state. And I think that it will, it will serve the county well. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Gina. Appreciate that. Lot of work, you, Jimmy, a lot of departments. Thank you. Okay. Left off with lead based. G and H. I think we're lead based now.
Letter F. This is a resolution in support of the application to the Ohio Department of Development for funding under the Ohio, or Lead Safe Ohio campaign and the county allocation in the amount of $2,736,000. There's no local match. We'll be working in conjunction with some of the housing organizations in the area, Y and DC, MyCap, BNOY. It appears like we're going to be able to accomplish over 100 Lead Safe renovations using these funds between the four of us and some, a few other little programs that'll be thrown in there as well to support those Lead Safe renovations.
Thank you. Okay, sanitary. Erica.
Letter G is a resolution establishing responsibilities for application for permit for sanitary sewer crossing the Ohio Turnpike on Market Street, State Route 7, for Love's Travel Stops. And letter H is sanitary resolution authorizing the president of the board to prepare and submit application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission, state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required.
Okay, great. Thank you. Change orders, motion to approve. Resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions, letters A through H.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Okay. That was relatively painless, by chance. Relatively painless. The pain starts now.
Yes, now the pain starts.
Pain starts. Sure, Mary Ann, welcome. Anything you guys want to update us on or talk about or give us a little bit of insight of?
There's nurse Audrey, Nancy. If I can, I'd just like to mention that September's recognized as National Workforce Development Month and National Recovery Month. And we know that those two go hand in hand, that the recovery of persons with substance abuse problems and mental health issues really impact the participation rate. So we have worked over the last five years with special grants directed at opioids, as you may know, and to help those who have been impacted personally by recovery or those who would like to go into occupations that support recovery, like social work, nursing, PMT, things like that. We've recently received, we've spent over $2 million in those past five years in special grant funds. And we've recently requested and received another $188,000 over what we'd originally been allocated to continue that work through March. And we're hopeful that there will be some continuation after that point for those state funds, so.
Thank you, great.
Great. Thank you.
And as the director now of MCCTC.
MCC.
MCC, oh, that's right. Mixing my acronyms up. MCC, Mountain Columbiana.
Yes.
Mountain Columbiana.
Charcer Assistant.
Yeah, char. And we welcome, you know, it's nicer to meet at the Dutch House and have breakfast, you know. Anthony's always there on.
Oh, yeah. I won't pass that up.
I didn't get out the door without buying like $50 worth of pastries.
You're supposed to bring the Burger King today.
I know. You know, it was too early, that eight o'clock start time, you know. You know, I was, I was scooting, but, well, thank you. We appreciate you being here, giving us some insight, so. Thank you very much. Anybody else selected? Directors, anyone have anything they'd like to add?
It's very quiet here today.
Yeah, goodness.
Of course, our meetings are relatively peaceful.
All right, that's, that's a good reason.
We like that. That's, that's nice of you, too. That's good.
Marty, say something.
Marty?
First off, I just want to publicly thank Gina here. There was a lot of work that went into that resolution that you just passed. I know Justin from the carpenters here has been working very closely with Gina. That protects the county from being able to monitor some of the contractors that are coming in. So I'd like to turn it over to Justin since he's had a lot more in-depth with Gina and the whole crew. But thank you for doing what you do here.
Thank you. Justin Grant, Carpenter's Union Business Representative. Just wanted to thank Gina and the prosecutor's office and the commissioners for passing that resolution. In the construction industry, we face a lot of contractors that are cheating by paying construction workers under the books or off the books. And the affidavit process will absolutely hold these contractors accountable at the beginning of the project and at the end of the project. So we just want to thank for all the time spent researching tax fraud in the construction industry. And it's much appreciated by the Carpenter's Union and Building Trades. So, thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, Justin. Yeah. Gina and the prosecutor's office did a lot of work on that with respect to making sure that, you know, it's a level playing field, you know, and it's important that we put every type of checks and balances in that we legally can do to make sure people are doing the right thing on behalf of the workers, you know. Because too often, you know, they escape through different issues and, you know, not held accountable. So, yeah, thank you for all the work that everybody did to make it happen. So, thank you very much.
I just wanted to say, you know, sometimes it's easy, too, because the law provides for it. And so, you know, with, and I have to, you know, thank John Hayno as well because he put some time and effort into researching this. And what we find a lot of times is that if, you know, if you just look at what we already have available to us, it's easy to, you know, to develop these mechanisms to ensure consistency and fairness across the board. And so when the commissioners look at these projects, they're looking at apples and apples and not apples and oranges, which is what our purchasing director always likes to say, apples or oranges. But no, no, we're happy to do it. And, you know, we'll always be in favor of following the law and making sure that everything is done fairly and consistently. So we're happy to, happy to continue to do that.
That makes it easy for us. Because many times prior to this, I would go to Jimmy because I would get a call. And I would say to Jimmy, this isn't right. Something's wrong. We got to straighten this out. So we'd have to run around, or he would run around, and try to check what you've put and spent time to, time with in putting an affidavit together, try to get it filtered out by calling either Marty or at that time, you know, Dee Tomaso or, you know, the other guys that were involved in some of those big projects. And I'm like, oh, my God. I said, why would they do that to their own workers? And one was hospitalization for their workers, for God's sakes. And this prevents that. Because even if they don't answer a lot of these, we know that something's not right when we look at the contracts. So these will be probably distributed to, you'll have them, Jimmy, and.
What I'm going to do is when any department that pertains to public works requests advertisement dates, I'm going to scan, include what should be in the boilerplate and for them, and acknowledge receipt, or I won't give them the advertising dates.
Good idea.
Thank you.
So I'm happy about that. I mean, it's been a long time coming. Thank you, Gina, and your staff. Because this has been like from the day I started here with Butch Taylor, Joe Mansky.
Right.
All the way back. So you took the bull by the horns and did it. Others told me they were, and it did. So I'm happy.
You know, I agree with Carol and, you know, same thing we did with project labor agreements. I want to thank labor for getting this to our attention because, you know, you're on the front lines. Gina, Dejanova's office and herself work very, very hard. She has a fine staff of attorneys. And, you know, this is about bringing accountability back to Mahoning County. Because, I mean, you're talking, we award multimillion-dollar contracts that the public should know about. And if we can't ask certain questions of those people who are bidding, then basically, you know, we're doing this in a world today where you have all of this fraud and stuff happening at a high-speed transaction. We just want to make sure we know who we're doing business with. It makes sense. It's like truth and lending. So this would be truth in construction that we find out who's actually going to do these jobs if we're giving them that kind of money. So in fact, appreciate all the hard work, Gina and Audrey and everybody on your staff and labor as well to get this accomplished.
But you just have to look at today's agenda to see that, to reaffirm what you said, Anthony, 17 million, you know, for the resolution award to Maruch and Gaffney. You know, it's a, and big right now, the contracts, you know, the cost is going through the roof on things, you know. It's even more difficult to secure the funding for, you know, with respect to the cost of the enormous cost and the increase, you know, inflation and things have driven the prices up, too. So it's all good. Carol, anything else?
You know, I just want to say a shout out for it. The nuns were supposed to be here today. So I told Dave, they're probably driving around, can't find a parking lot. Or they don't know how to put the money in that parking lot across the street, but.
I would have never stopped them. They would have just stopped in the road and came in.
Well, I'm sure you're right on that. But I don't know if anybody here's ever been to the shrine for mass or novenas. But it is a, it is a great place to visit. They have a beautiful shrine there. And the nuns have done one phenomenal job with the daycare as well as now with the nursing facility and the assisted living. And I would not be, I would not worry at all about having a loved one come there because I know the nuns take care of their individuals 100%. So this will help them a little.
And I want to thank the commissioners. Now, we're on the backside of the train. Thank you for your support. It's a very important project to continue the ministry she is referencing to service the folks of Mahoning County and the good work they are doing. Thank you again.
Just one thing I wanted to add, that I've known people over the years that have had blessings happen and miracles in their life from that shrine. And I'm talking people that had cancer issues that were actually cured and the cancer went away. And I know some folks who went there to pray every day for their family. So this was a no-brainer to do. We're glad we're able to work with Lordstown and get this accomplished and keep on having those nuns pray for us because the miracles that come from that, from that shrine out there are just unbelievable. And it's very true, God is real. Miracles do happen.[1586.86] And there is a heaven waiting for all of us. And those nuns are the closest to that. So I've actually been out there on a few times praying for various things in my life. So I'm glad this was able to get accomplished.
Thank you for your support, faith's a great thing. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Well, you know, I, I will say, and I think I've said this before, forgive me if I'm redundant, but, you know, we used to take my mother there for adult daycare all the time. And she spent her last birthday, you know, on her birthday, that she, when she turned 89. And my wife and I, my sister, we all went up and, and they always make a big deal for your, for your birthday. They put my mom in a chair in the front and, you know, and everybody sings and, you know, and, and I can't remember which nun it was that, that.
Might be Sister Madeline.
I was going to say Sister Madeline.
Decades.
She's, she's.
Is it an older one or not?
No, no.
Was it a young one?
Dark hair, I mean, real vibrant.
Might be Sister Janay.
I'd, I'd be remiss if I, if I guessed, but, but anyway, they brought her up and, and they sang to her and my mom was, and they were dancing and, you know, and that's when my mom got her out pretty well. And, and they asked her, you know, did you make a wish? And she said, yes. And she says, you can tell us your wish. And that's when my mom looked up and she said, I wish every day could be like today. And so all of them did an amazing job there. I mean, we would go up and, you know, my sister dropped her off and picked her up. And I knew a couple of the individuals, Jim that passed away used to drive the bus and deliver, you know, people when they picked them up there. And, but just do a phenomenal job, you know, so. It is, it is a, a very inspiring place. And, you know, I used to watch it daily when I was the sales director at Thomas Steel. I went down Lipkey Road every day for 24 years, you know, and, and saw it, so. And we all went and prayed when Jim Evans, his son, got in that accident and we went down there, you know, so a lot of different things. But thank you, you know, please pass, pass along our congratulations for their good work, so, thank you. And Labor guys, I can't say enough about you guys. I mean, believe me, you know, and people don't realize how great it is in this valley to have the labor that we have, you know? Because when you look at projects, and I get so upset when they talk about, you know, unions or labors or different things and say it drives the cost up and stuff. And we have proven time and time again that you use union labor, your costs are going to go down because you're not redoing with things, you're not replacing things, you're not going back to the drawing board and reinventing it, re-engineering it. You know, when I, when I used to go down south, when I worked at Thomas Steel, you know, so many different things that weren't union labor, you know, that, that were done over and over again, you know? And today, you know, that Y S U building, you know, the, the Tressel Building, Tressel Watson Building is, is a prime example. Nobody, nobody in, in any other state could had their labor, you know, construct something to that effect, you know, in, in this valley, in this county. So we thank you because of the job you do and the work you do on behalf of all of us. So it's, it's well, it's, you know, it's great that we have such a great worker relationship, you know, between everybody because it makes it work for everyone, you know, so. Anyway, everybody had a great time at Canfield Fair, we ate too much. Anthony and myself and, and Carol and Sheriff Green, we got the judge, we got the judge of a contest. And you know what, God bless Joe, the owner of the Blue Wolf.
Right.
What's his last name?
I don't know.
I can't remember his last name, but.
Sons.
Rizonda? He, he came, now this was four young ladies that, that did the, in the four H, and they had a cooking contest. And Anthony, and, and Carol and Joe, the owner of the Blue Wolf, assisted the cooks. And these young ladies made, made pork chop dinners. And each of the four of them made a pork chop dinner. And Jerry and, and Anthony and myself got to eat them, right?
And it was on the bone.
And, yeah, and so they all had a, they all had a, a assortment of food, the same thing, given that 30 minutes to cook a dinner.
Forty-five minutes.
To cook a dinner. And they were already, they were already the four finalists because it started out with over 20 of them that got down to that point. And then they were up on stage cooking. And you want to talk about unique and, and amazing dishes, it's, it's kind of hard to do different things with a pork chop, right? You know, but they had corn on the cob, they had potatoes, they had vegetables. And the things that they did, the one girl that we picked that won, she took the corn and put butter and honey together and she melted it onto the corn and then grilled it on the grill. And I'm telling you, when you ate that corn.
Couldn't quit.
It was, it was just like, I, I mean, and then the pork chops were great. And it was so difficult because, you know, we tried to, we all had to collectively, you know, rate them and pick a winner. And Joe from the Blue Wolf gave $400 to the winner, 300 to the second place, two and one. So he gave $1,000 out, plus he brought all of the food for them to use. I mean, he, and he's, from what I understand, he's really huge with the fair. You know, he goes up there and camps literally the whole, the whole event. And so these young ladies did an amazing job. And they were like, you know, when we were putting the points together, it was like 25, 24, 23, 22, you know, all of them were within a point of each other. And, you know, congratulations on the people that work, you know, the people that work with the young, with our young adults, you know, going through Ohio State Extension, the four H, the Canfield Fair, the Fair Board, everyone, they do such a great job. That's really what it's all about is the kids and the young people growing up and, you know, how they go through the process and, you know, God bless everybody that put it on and did such a, a great job.
That's the fair. The fair is about agriculture, it's about plants, it's about vegetables, it's about cooking.
Giant ponkins.
Oh my gosh, unreal. I looked at those and I'm thinking, how the hell did they get those? I mean, a crane, they had to.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I live on New Road and, and on West New Road, the guy that has a purple door on his ranch house, he, he grows it out. And.
How do you get it there?
I'm telling you, he, he didn't, he didn't grow it this year because last year, I think was the last year he did it. But, you know, he fertilizes that portion of his yard over and over again. And when it starts to grow, he has like a plastic terrarium he puts over it and he like incubates this thing. And it's, I'm telling you, when they take it off to get out, it's literally, it's over 1,000 pounds, you know, and, and they do, they bring a big sling in and they, they lift it up and they put it on a truck and they have a little lift and oyst and, I don't know, God bless them, so. Okay. All right, and Mary Ann and Char, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate the update and the insight and the work that you guys do. And do you ever run into Bert anymore? I used to be able to talk baseball with him, you know, Bert Seen was the former director.
I don't know this week. I didn't see him talk very much. He's enjoying retirement.
All right, everybody have a great weekend coming up. And that's our motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Audrey, I didn't ask if you had any.
Oh, no. I'm good. Only thing I would say is, you know, everyone still support the teachers from young sons of schools and.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And them going through and stuff. Kids need to be in school.
Yeah.
And I would, you know, encourage those that are at the table to bargain in good faith.
Yep. And I think that Lauren McNally sent us something this morning.
Audrey, West Side Bowl.
West Side Bowl?
Five o'clock, yeah.
Is that tonight?
Tonight.
Tonight from five to eight at West Side Bowl. Okay, excellent, yep.
Just got that today.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for monitoring, Audrey. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Romilio McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Yes.